And Burnaby to help children, families and seniors. And whereas the city of Burnaby and United Way together strive to build a city where With that, we move on to reports. So a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And Community Heritage Commission Counselor Jordan, you have a series of reports.
Thank you, your worship. I was just thinking Counselor Johnson, I should trade back and forth because I've got three, oh, and he's got four. Anyway, sorry about that, but that's just how it comes out sometimes. So the first report is from the commission is remembering working people plaques around the project, plaques around the province project. And the recommendation is that council approve the installation of two commemorative plaques for the B.C. Labor Heritage Center's plaques around the province project as outlined in- They are cast in metal and they are very attractive significant markers. And so this is, and the text of those is going, is included in what you see tonight. The two plaques that we will have in Burnaby are in recognition of the Barnett Lumber Company Millworker Strike, which happened at the turn of the century. And also a plaque commemorating the Japanese Workman Railway Disaster. And this was an event where more than 20 workers were killed on a train in the Lost Creek area along the Burnett, Burnett River. Oh- Company Mill. One will be in Burnett Marine Park and the other one will be along the trail that goes along by the Burnett River in that same area as the accident actually occurred. And the council will, when it all gets together to have them actually installed and unveiled, there'll be more information coming forward for councils to attend.
Right. Thank you very much, Counselor Jordan. Questions been called. All those in favor, opposed and carried. 4B, please.
And this is the Kapoor Singh Sidhu Stop of Interest Sign. And the recommendation is that council authorize staff to facilitate the installation of the proposed provincial stop of interest sign for Kapoor Singh Sidhu at Burnett Marine Park as outlined in section three of this report and that copy be sent to Parks, Rec and Culture Commission. And I salute. Again, your worship, the province of British Columbia issued a call in the spring for installation of new stop of interest signs around the province. And, and I think everyone remembers seeing these at road pullouts along every highway around, around the province. But as part of the history celebrations and perhaps Canada 150, they decided to, to put out some new ones this year. And so we applied again for the city and suggested some significant advance in places in our city that might be recognized. And because this one, these ones were particularly to recognize different ethnic groups within the province, this one was selected for Burnaby. And it's to recognize Mr. Sidhu, who was one of the early lumber industrialists in our province. And so this particular plaque, as you can see, is designed in the format tradition of the province of British Columbia. And so this one is their sign, but we'll be again installing this near the sign of the original mill. And it will be in our Burnett Marine Park. And the maps and everything about where it will be located are included in the package. And again, when it's actually erected and unveiled, council will be invited to participate at that time. And in this case, the province has to look after and maintain the sign into the future. So it's no cost to the city.
Thank you. Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. I think these are great events that are being planned by the Heritage Commission and the province. And it's wonderful to have signposts around to commemorate the history of our city and the rest of the province. But I'm just wondering in, in, in this specific one, whether the family of the Sidhu has been informed of this because they do still live in North Burnaby and one of the members, you probably all know Kerry Sidhu.
Yes.
Who I think is the grandson of Mr. Kapoor Singh Sidhu or great grandson, I'm not sure which. But I know that he told me that his family started the lumber business on Burnett Highway. So it would be wonderful to have the family there present at, at that time.
Absolutely. Even before we made the application on their behalf, staff was in touch with the, with the family of Mr. Sidhu and they're very supportive of this going forward and everything to do with it. So they're quite thrilled that it was selected and, and they have been in touch with them for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Daliwah.
Thank you, your worship. I, I just also wanted to say a couple of words about Mr. Kapoor Singh Sidhu. He was prominently, I guess, featured in our Burnaby History Book that we published a few years ago. This was all about, one chapter was dedicated to Mr. Sidhu, who at the turn of the century, last century, somewhere in between, I guess, after the first quarter or so, when things weren't going well, managed to restart a previously stopped and/or abandoned mill and start up some work again and employ a fair amount of people, not, not just only the South Asian community, but also people in the area. Well-respected. I guess the, one thing worth noting, your worship, is the South Asian community in the early 20th century, when they got here, they felt they were very much part of the same family because obviously coming from India, which was also a direct colony in a way of British and same with Canada, they all felt they were a British subject and they felt very close about it and, and perfectly at home in terms of saying, yeah, we're among our family, this isn't anything different than where they came from. And, and participated wholeheartedly, not only just working, built and building the, building the, the province, but also taking on entrepreneurial risks, particularly in the lumber industry because obviously in, throughout the province, they were well-recognized for the hard work and, and also participation in laborious, labor type of work. And Mr. Sidhu was among some of them who eventually ended up running, actually taking on the, the mills and, and, and working with Billman Industry on the island, Assas Saint Joel in Vancouver, Fraser Mills, et cetera. They were prominent in that. So it's good to see they're being recognized for the work along with, with Chinese, Canadian citizens who also worked very hard in terms of building this province, your worship. I think it's very appropriate if we, I'm, I'm certain many of us have seen the remnants of that mill on Barnett Marine Drive. When you go there's something, I'm not certain whether it's exactly the same site, but, but there's a plaque about that mill that existed. I imagine that was one of them. So good to see that being recognized. I think Kerry Sidhu that, that the Council Corrigan mentioned is, is on the, I guess, Hastings Merchant Association is serving there and a prominent family in there who are also continuing some businesses in North Burnaby. Good to see that happen.
I was interested in whether or not you would catch it on the, on the mock-up of the proposed stop of interest sign on page 18 for Mr. Sidhu. But it says that he was one of B.C.'s earliest lumber industrialists and his operations employed hundreds, including those at Kapoor Sawmills located here. Known for his education, prosperity and charity, he used his success to advocate for civil liberties for the Southeast Asian community. And a legacy still celebrated today. Now, I'm no expert in this stuff, but I think it's South Asian community, not Southeast Asian community. That would be the Thais and Vietnamese and so when we're doing this-
The province.
It's the province of British Columbia, I admit.
Yeah.
And if they say Southeast Asian, they're probably right. But just in this one instance, the province might be incorrect and-
You never know, we may-
Anyway, I thought I would point that out, that I think it's probably going to receive better, be received better if it's South Asian community rather than Southeast Asian community.
Thank you, your worship. I, I must say, I read the, the plaque when, in our meeting, that I just scanned over because you just assume what the word is without reading it. And, and yes, I, I would suggest to you, according to that book by, I guess, by Harry, wrote that it's clearly South Asians, they were basically Punjabis, like, like that he knew that he served them. But he did say that a large other community, but, but not, not South Asian, but it would be South Asian, but South, South Asian would be good, more correct than Southeast Asians.
I, yeah, I guess it's the lawyer in me that I read everything trying to find whether or not, in fact, it's correct. But in this case, the reason, I mean, if it's a typo in a report, I don't usually complain. But when they're going to put it on a plaque and it's going to be there forever, you want to be sure that we remind them to get the designated ethnic community correct so that we, we are going to be making the necessary change on that. I hope they haven't sent that to the provincial foundry yet.
I think they wouldn't, but you might have to get out of the sand or, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Ponce, could you speak to Mr. Wolf in the morning about, thank you.
With that, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
And then last but not least from the commission is the Burnaby Then and Now, celebrating Burnaby's 125th anniversary with heritage markers. And the recommendation is that council approve the final design and location for a series of plaques produced under the Burnaby 125 Heritage Marker Project as outlined in this report, and I would so move. So, your worship, as you were coming in today and council, you saw in the foyer, the first production of the 12 plaques under our heritage marker program. And this was a result of earlier in the year when council approved the expenditure of $60,000 from the City's Gaming Fund to implement an ongoing heritage project, something that would, you know, mark this special anniversary year, but also celebrate our history in, in some kind of new and unique way. And as well, the commission applied for a British Columbia, Canada 150, celebrating heritage grant, and we received an additional $57,000 for that, which allowed the staff and folks to considerably expand the scope of what was originally planned for this project. So over the last few months, our staff have developed a series of themes that they wanted to bring forward through this particular program. And they wanted to highlight some aspects of Burnaby's history that might not previously have, have been given the recognition or attention that others would have. And so what you see this evening is the result of that work. There are 12, they call them plaques, but they're not really plaques. It's got to be a better name. Heritage Markers, we'll call them, that will eventually be distributed around the city. And the location for the plaques again is listed in the report today. So they're kind of distributed in locales around the city where the particular event, individual or topic is featured and highlighted. We have the first one being Burnaby's Response to the Great Depression, and that will be located in, in the precinct of the Tommy Douglas Library, which is our neighborhood of our old city hall. Again, the workforce at Barnett Mill at Burnett, Barnett Marine Park. We've already spoken tonight about Mr. Sidhu's plaque. We have recognition of Eileen Daly that will be posted at Confederation Park, recognition of Chinese farmers in the Big Bend area. And that is from the very earliest of days. That one, the committee suggested so more of the public could see it, would be placed at, in the precinct of Riverway Golf Course. Kingsway in the post-war era, someplace in the Station Square area, a tribute to Alan Emmett and post-war Burnaby, that will be at the Alan Emmett Center. Another one for, about the saving of Burnaby Lake and the creation of the Burnaby Lake Regional Park at Burnaby Lake, the preserving of the Burnett River in this, along the Central Valley Greenway near Gallardy Way. A very interesting plaque talking about the Willingden Heights, so the first subdivision that, that went in and the changing of Burnaby into a suburban community. Also the Dominion Bridge Studios plaque, which will be located at Jim Lorimer and show the conversion of what once was a heavy industrial site, making bridges to what is now a film studio. So talking about the industrial history of our city. And last but not least, another plaque honoring Ernie Winch and New Vista, which will be in Chaffrakey Park on Holly Street. So this, this little project that we started off a few months ago has really turned into something very special and I'm very, very proud of, of our staff and what, what they have come up with when we kind of just gave them carte blanche to say something that will be a lasting memory from this 125th anniversary and something that will take the history of Burnaby out into the community and said, okay, go for it. And I guess the staff put together a working group, developed a lot of ideas like this and then went out and also engaged the community. And you all know Lisa Card from, from the museum. I asked her to give me an actual little bit of a supplementary report on, on everything that's come out of this project and a relatively small investment, I would say, from the beginning. And so she sent me an additional email. She said that, that we have had over 125 community members involved in this project. So as well as four researchers who have been able to be funded from the project, one of our own auxiliary staff, Eric Damer, and three students, Denise Fong, William Archibald and Rebecca Salas from UBC, UVIC and SFU respectively. They were all history students who worked as a summer project on this. And so gathering the background information, going through our archives, finding relevant materials and reports, coordinating with the community and everything to develop these, these snippets of, of our history. The little group of researchers was also assisted by Dr. Alan Seeger. Everybody here, I think around the table knows Alan. And he has recently retired from SFU History Department. And so he's kind of been the senior leader with the research folks. And he did a particular amount of work on William Pritchard, who's the highlight of one of, of one of the plaques outside, talking about the depression era of Burnaby. So it's nice to see former Reeve Pritchard will be recognized and honored. So also through the work on the project, the team identified the need for some assistance of an advisory committee in helping guide their research, especially with respect to the early Chinese Canadians who lived in, in Burnaby and then obviously in the farming area and in the south. And so they developed a separate advisory committee of people from the Canadian alumni network for Pacific Canada Heritage, various folks from South Burnaby also to guide, to guide them and collect additional materials that we didn't necessarily have here in, here in the city of Burnaby to talk more about that particular part of the project. And again, there was other, you know, citizens that came forward and said, gee, we'd like to get involved in this too. And, and it's now expanded and there's actually been audio interviews done with some, some people that came forward that had expertise in certain areas and, and even so, some possibly some videos that will become part of the record as they, they finish off this project. So it's really expanded and it's brought together a whole new sort of cadre of interest in, and as I said, aspects of Burnaby's heritage that, that people really hadn't focused on previously. So it's, it's, I was very excited about it. The members of the commission were really excited the other night when we first had a, had a look at the pictures and then realized that there's going to be more able to come out of this because of the extra funding that we receive from the grant that will, again, all be eventually installed around the city, but also have a place within our archives and the museum. And, and so it's, you know, turned into quite a nice thing and I hope people will appreciate it when they, when they see these pieces out in the community. And they're interesting because there's photographic information as well as, you know, some history of, of our city with so many new residents, is it better to take the history to them and show them what Burnaby used to be, used to be like in different times, not just from the era of the museum, right? So it's been really fun.
All right. I'm going to be interested in how they play the, the former Reeve Pritchard and the depression because I think my Burnaby history is right in that it was Pritchard who put us into bankruptcy and we ended up in trusteeship for the next 12 years as a result of it. So I'll, I'll be interested in how that one comes out in a plaque.
It's right out there, have a look. That's because he kept, he kept paying the people that he was hired to work through the depression with it. And unfortunately, the, the government, the feds didn't come through with the money that they'd promised. So, and he kept paying them, so we ran out of money.
Yeah, and it's, it is interesting because that was one of the formulative times in Burnaby history when we were put into trusteeship and had a provincial government trustee looking after the city. And it took some time for us to ever get back to the position where we had control of our own destiny. And as a result, the reserve system started in which we began to save for the things we wanted to buy so that we would never go into bankruptcy again. So the, the people who took over at that point said, we've got to look after ourselves in a different way for the future. And it was really probably the seminal stages for us having the reserves we have today is that there's been that attitude of constantly looking after the, the future and never jeopardizing again our ability to control our own destiny. So it is, it is interesting that from out of that history comes a lot of different things that were done later on as a result.
It's interesting that Reeve Pritchard has a very colorful history even before he became the Reeve of Burnaby, which may, he's one of the few previous mayors slash reeves who doesn't have a park slash building or anything named after him in the city. He was given recognition, not shortly before he, he passed away in, in some form by the city, but, but maybe that's why he doesn't have anything named after him. Seriously.
Yeah, I, I think the bankruptcy likely was held against him for a little while. I'm glad to see he's been rehabilitated in a, in a new plaque. So Counselor Daliwah.
Thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm very privileged to be member of the commission. And you get these reports from the staff, how the history is being now going to be on display for everyone to see, how we are preserving all the, the past in terms of both records as well as, as well as exhibitions basically taken to the public rather than coming to one place. It will be available to see for both the residents and people who come to Burnaby. What's interesting, your worship, is for someone like myself who wasn't born here, have a perspective of, of different nations. Like where I come from, civilization has been there for thousands of years. When we read the history, we're talking about before B.C., we're talking about a thousand years before this history generally. So, so there's a lot. And what that does is most of it has been there, but nothing much is changing as rapidly. But when you compare this over the last 150 years, your worship, you can see the change that has occurred at such a great speed. Like even someone like myself who come to Burnaby 50 years ago, I can see a big change to see what was then versus now. And just stretch that back another 75 years, it's totally different, different world altogether. It seems like this wasn't like anywhere in Burnaby, what you see. But these were the people, your worship, who struggled and who toiled and who really persevered in terms of even harsh climate, whatnot, to settle this place. And, and when you see through the, through the lenses of historians and see, it's very, for me, it's very riveting and engaging. And I was very happy to see that the, I'm certain that these are not only the 12 things we can talk about, there are probably just as many more dozens of those things to talk about. And I'm certain when people will see, oh, I remember more than this, that's what would happen. But this is a great start, your worship, and I think the- is that there's been that attitude of constantly looking after the the future and never jeopardizing again our ability to control our own destiny. So it is it is interesting that from out of that history comes a lot of different things that were done later on as a result.
It's interesting that Reeve Pritchard has a very colorful history even before he became the Reeve of Burnaby, which may he's one of the few previous mayors slash Reeves who doesn't have a park slash building or anything named after him in the city. He was given recognition not shortly before he he passed away in in some form by the city, but but maybe that's why he doesn't have anything named after him. Curious, eh?
Yeah, I I think the bankruptcy likely was held against him for a little while. I'm glad to see he's been rehabilitated in a in a new plaque. So Counselor Daliwa.
Thank you, your worship. I'm very privileged to be member of the commission. You get these reports from the staff, how the history is being now going to be on display for everyone to see, how we are preserving all the the past in terms of both records as well as as well as exhibitions basically taken to the public rather than coming to one place it will be available to see for both the residents and people who come to Burnaby. What's interesting, your worship, is for someone like myself who wasn't born here, have a perspective of of different nations, like where I come from, civilizations have been there for thousands of years. When we read the history, we're talking about before B.C., we were talking about thousand years before the history generally. So so there's a lot and what that does is most of it has been there, but nothing much is changing as rapidly. But when you compare this over the last 150 years, your worship, you can see the change that has occurred at such a great speed. Like even if someone like myself who come to Burnaby 50 years ago, I can see a big change to see what was then versus now. And you stretch that back another 75 years, it's totally different, different world altogether. It seems like this wasn't like anywhere in Burnaby what you see. But these were the people, your worship, who struggled and who twilled and who really persevered in terms of even harsh climate, whatnot, to settle this place. And and when you see through the to the lenses of historians and see it's very, for me, it's very riveting and engaging and I was very happy to see that the I'm certain that these are not only the 12 things we can talk about, there are probably just as many more dozens of those things to talk about. And I'm certain when people will see, oh, I remember more than this, that's what would happen. But this is a great start, your worship, and I think the the kiosks that will be built around these to to preserve these markers would display different parts of the history. It's not only a pride for all of us, but it's also for those who are coming, who are new to this, to recognize that, look, this was a place then and what has changed in the last 150 years. I recognize Indigenous Canadians were here long before that, but the change that has occurred is mesmerizing to me what's has happened over the last 150 years, your worship. From nothing, basically, but we knew Westminster to Vancouver, while Vancouver wasn't much either, we have now 250,000 people living just in our city and the change that has occurred. So that's what's exciting, well, that's your worship.
Thank you. And Counselor Volko.
Just very quickly, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I when we are Pritchard's name came up, I think it's also important that I don't think many, many people recognize this about former Reeve Pritchard was, as a young man, he was charged with sedition for his role in the 1919 Winnipeg General Strike, a seminal moment in Canadian labor history. So he's an interesting character in all kinds of ways and I don't know if if any mention will be made of that in any of his plaques or but anyways, I just I just think, yeah, fascinating character and maybe this might spur people on to investigate a little more about some of the some of the people that are and some of the events that will be mentioned on some of these plots.
Well, there's a fascinating history in Burnaby and and I think a lot of people, when they get a when they begin to get some knowledge about it, start to start to look into the history of this area. And and you know who the modern day politician we have who's related to former Reeve Pritchard?
His grandson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's Bob Williams, the former cabinet minister in the NDP government is is the progeny of Mr. Pritchard. So it is really, really fascinating as you see all of these connections. And what we want to do is inspire people as a result of this to look into Burnaby's history and to realize that this is a city that's been shaped over many, many years by many people who had very colorful backgrounds and contributed to an interesting historical development in this city and and some of them quite contemporary as we go on into, for instance, the plaque related to Reeve Alan Emmett, who had a long, a long history with Burnaby. So I think I think it's very fascinating. Counselor McDonnell.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment on the Ernie Winch and the New Vista. Ernie Winch was the founding member of the CCF and got elected as an MLA in this province and was there for many years. And he founded New Vista. And to show you the foresight that this man had back in the early mid 40s was when he structured it, he structured a society, which is the New Vista Society, and then he structured a board of trustees. And the board of trustees is made up of five. There's one appointed by the city, which I represent. There's one from the Host Lions Club because they were there right from the beginning to help. And and the third one comes from the board of society board appointment. And then those three, we appoint two from the community. And when I explain it to people, budgets, any contracts, anything like that goes through the board, they approve everything, but then it has to come to the trustees for approval because we have final say. So I explained it to people, I says, if you think of the federal government, it's like the House of Commons and the Senate, except ours works. And the idea that he did this for was so nobody could come in and buy up a bunch of memberships in the society and take it over and then liquidate assets. And today, when we look at the assets, we have 545 rental units, we have a care home, we're just building a new one, we're expanding to more low-income family homes and stuff like this. So there's a lot of assets there and he had the foresight to put in a safeguard that there just somebody couldn't walk in, take that over and then just liquidate everything. So I mean, that's going back 70 years ago and over 70 years, he had that foresight.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Counselor Jordan, and it is great work the Community Heritage Commission is doing. I I know the people on there are really enjoying being involved in that particular committee of council because it is at every meeting a learning experience.
We got lessons from the members of the committee at every meeting and last meeting was Counselor Daliwa's turned to give a lesson and it was very, very interesting coming from spelling, spelling lesson, right? Just just say that I I forgot to mention that that actually because again, because we got the grant money, they're actually going to be producing a series of short video vignettes based on five of the plaques and they have already retained glue studios of Burnaby to do this. So so there'd be, in case you're never in the neighborhood where one of the plaques are, you'll be able to go on Heritage website and and, you know, see the video version. And there is actually a live interview, I don't know Counselor Volko if you've listened to it, but there is a an interview with Miss with Mr. Pritchard that's in on our Heritage website in the oral history part of the collections.
There you go. Another reason to go to our Heritage website.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, opposed, carry. Moving on to the Financial Management Committee.
Your worship, now for the really interesting stuff. On that note, I will move on behalf of the committee, the council approve a contract award to Hewlett Packard Enterprise Canada Corporation for an estimated value of 1.657600, including GST and PST and the amount of 177,600 as outlined in the report.
Second.
Your worship, the city is about to embark on a on a roughly 10-year upgrade on our accounting software. The there's two reports this evening. This first one is actual purchase of these upgrade software. The hardware, sorry, this is for the hardware of the towards that upgrade.
Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry.
The next one, your worship, is the software. And this is the council approve a contract award to Korea Tech Group for an estimated 1.072,523 million, including GST and the amount of 51,073 as outlined in the report.
Question?
Second, please. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carry.
This is exciting, your worship. Contract award regarding telephony systems, hardware and software. Now I move the council approve a contract award to Longview Systems Corporation for an estimated value of 1.668,915, including GST and PST and the amount of 160,594 as outlined in the report.
Question?
Your worship.
Second.
This is a this is a an award for upgrading of our telephone system. I believe it's it's either 10 or 15 years since the last system was done. Technology has changed quite a bit and our staff are finding when a a unit breaks down, they have to go to eBay to buy replacement parts, which is getting kind of redundant. The report just before us is for people who are familiar with Cisco Systems, Telomont System, this on the hardware side and the related voiceover internet protocol software that would that would operate them.
And our old system, to show you what we're replacing, was Nortel. So that's a ways back. Maybe someone in staff can tell me why we call it a telephony system. I would have thought telephone system would have worked okay, but this is the only place we seem to get telephony systems. Ms. Cassam, do you know why that is?
It's just the the talk of of the technology today. It's telephony is is how they pronounce it.
Oh, telephony. Oh, so we're saying with the accent on the wrong syllable. There you go. Telephony.
This isn't the only thing that's using that.
That's a lot more dramatic, a telephony system makes it sound like it's not telephones.
Yeah.
That sort of justifies how much we're paying for them.
Right.
Sad but true.
Worth another million.
Okay. So are you ready for the question on the telephony phones?
As long as we're not getting a phony phone.
All those in favor, opposed, and carry.
And last, your worship, regarding 2018 permissive property tax exemptions, I would move that council authorize city solicitor to bring down a permissive property tax bylaw to exempt the properties listed in attachment for from property taxes in 2018.
Second motion.
Your worship, this is a long list of social service organizations, churches, some sports-related facilities that provide services to the community that complement or or substitute for services that the city doesn't offer in the social service side and and such. As such, the organizations such as the churches and sports groups that offer these services are are eligible under the Local Government Act for partial or full property tax exemption on the footprint of their buildings. So the list before us is the list that would go forward for next year's tax calculations.
Great. And with that, all of all in favor, opposed, and carry. Already passed. Okay. Moving on to the city manager's report. Item 5.1 is the building permit tabulation report for August 1st to August 31st, 2017. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carry. Item 5.2. And this is authorization to forward this project to a public hearing on October 17th, 2017. And this is a CD development RM5S in the Brentwood Town Center Development Plan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carry. Motion that the committee rise and report.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion that the report of the committee be adopted.
Move.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Bylaws, Counselor McDonnell.
Thank you, worship. For third reading, reconsideration, and final adoption, I move the bylaw 13708. We now read a third time, reconsidered, finally adopted. Signed by the mayor and the clerk and the corporate seal affixed thereto.
Second motion.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carry. Is there any new business? Counselor Jordan.
Your worship, I just wanted to remind everyone that's watching on their computers because they're not watching on television. This weekend, all over the city, there's going to be tons of different events celebrating our 125th anniversary, starting at 1:25 on Friday at Confeder Park. So go on the various websites and see what kind of activities. I think there's going to be cake and cupcakes just about everywhere, but you have to find out with like which day, which time, which place. And so there'll be lots of lots of very cool events happening all around the city compared to Edmonds.
Edmonds at 5 o'clock on Friday, I'm in.
Bonterre, yep, they're saying Bonterre, yeah, near the all the rec centers will have some celebrations. And then on Sunday is Rivers Day at the Village, so.
And I think you can get into our facilities for $1.25.
All kinds of bargains.
All kinds of bargains out there to have. So, yeah, it's a good time to explore Burnaby on this weekend. Counselor Volko.
Thanks, your worship. I can't leave this issue alone, but I don't think I'm the only counselor that's run into this, but since the discontinuation of Cable 4 and Shaw not televising council, I was actually quite amazed that over the last week, how many people that I have no idea who they are have come up, they recognize me and are not happy that they can't turn on their Channel 4 on Monday and see what's going on at council. So just to let folks know, sorry, but that's it's not up to us to as to why Shaw's not televising it. But if you wish, you can send off a letter to your MP and send off a letter to Shaw. But a lot of people are not happy, your worship.
Well, you'll know that I sent a letter to the CRTC objecting strenuously. I'm probably one of the only mayors in the region who consistently has been appearing in front of the CRTC demanding that the cable companies hold up to their bargain on initially getting the right to utilize what are national facilities. And the CRTC has gradually allowed them to get out of those responsibilities on an incremental basis over over the past decades. There are very few voices that are raised. In fact, Burnaby is often alone in complaining about these issues because it's people saying, who's going to fight Ottawa? Who can stop the CRTC from doing what they will? And the fact is that they are lobbied by all of these big companies on a regular basis to provide them with those kind of benefits. And and now the money that was going into local cable TV is going is being paid directly over to commercial television on the promise that they'll do more local coverage. And I I think that's fundamentally wrong. I've said it over and over again, but nobody's listening. And it hasn't, other media has certainly not grabbed on to this as a a major issue to be concerned about, which is ironic, given that the media in so many ways is complaining about their inability to get public attention. And then they don't cover when there's a loss of major media outlets that gave young journalists an opportunity to become part of the system, to learn their skills, to be able to take risks. In fact, that's gone now and it's all about commercialization. It's disappointing and there's a lot of people making a lot of money, but no longer is that money going back into the communities that they're supposed to serve. And gradually, there's no one left to listen. So it it works out that way as you as you get to the point where the media has not defended its right to exist and and you end up in a situation in which you are losing opportunities for the public to know. And it can be advantageous for politicians to not have people looking at their meetings and scrutinizing what they're doing. But I still value highly the ability to watch our federal parliament, to be able to watch our provincial legislature on television, to all citizens to have a right to be able to get a a look at what their provincial and federal governments are doing. And I don't know why local government would not be given the same level of respect. Anyway, Counselor Johnson.
On this, one, your worship, I'm curious to you to staff. It doesn't replace the la- loss of Cable 4. I do know that we broadcast on the website, but do we also provide live Facebook and Twitter?
Your worship, through you, no, we don't do live Facebook or Twitter. We stream live on the website and it's video archived and available first thing in the morning, the day following the council meeting.
Okay, I understand that a couple of our neighboring municipalities are putting just like tweeting a link and then they click on a link and it takes you right to the broadcast.
Definitely looking to do that.
I personally like to stay away from tweeting. It seems to be hurting someone else.
I'm not suggesting it's a it's a replacement for radio, believe me.
All right. Is there anything else? All right, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you very much to everyone who was with us tonight. Thank you to staff and council.